We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone that's come out tonight to be with us and participate in our regular monthly board meeting. We've got some very important distinguished guests with us tonight, and welcome them as well. We always start our meetings out with prayer and a pledge, and Commissioner Ellis will lead us in our prayer tonight, and Commissioner Walker will lead us in our pledge.
I'll stand, please. Well, I'd just like to take time out today and say thank you for sending your son for our example in how we need to live each and every day. We failed. We're sinners, and we ask for your forgiveness, but we do ask for your guidance in our lives and strength. And what you want us to do as far as McDowell County goes, we're asking for your guidance so that it's the best for McDowell County people. Lead us and guide us in how you want us to live. Forgive us when we fail you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge and lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion, we approve the minutes for meeting tonight.
So do I.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your motion, we approve the agenda for tonight.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay to add a closed session, maybe after the Christmas greeting, but before recess, for personnel matter and economic development matter? And I also have an item to add under administrative items, which is the D transfer for the college.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we approve the agenda as presented with the two additions by county manager.
Second.
You have a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to our first A under appointments is the selection of our chair and vice chair for the next year. So I'd like to go ahead and start it off by making a motion tonight that Mr. Walker be the chair for the upcoming year.
One second, that motion.
Discussion. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the vice chair. Go here, nomination on vice chair.
I'm going to nominate Tony Brown as vice.
Second. Any other nominations? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving along now to the McDowell Trails and Association update. So we've got Steve Pierce and several other distinguished people here with us tonight. So Steve, the floor is yours, this man.
Thank you.
You've got it after this.
Okay, all right. Everything's reversed on this computer from mine. Well, I thank you so much for this opportunity to just give this little update. I think it was a little over a year ago I was here and I was introducing to the commissioners the Year of the Trail. 2023 is the Year of the Trail. Well, here we are a year later, and the Year of the Trail is winding down, and it's fun to give a little update on some of the things that we have done during the Year of the Trail and then what's coming ahead. And I'll do that, first of all, by just saying thank you for your support for greenways and trails in McDowell County. Also, thank you for being a member of the Great Trail State Coalition. When I spoke to you a little over a year ago, there were three counties or municipalities that were members of the Great Trail State Coalition. Last I checked, there were at least 16. So you were in the vanguard of starting that rolling, and the Coalition has done so much, and I'll just touch on that in a moment or two. But then also, thank you for supporting the benefits of outdoor recreation, physical and mental health, but then also economic growth of outdoor recreation businesses. And so, thank you so much for that. The Great Trail State Coalition was the driving force behind the bill that was passed by the North Carolina General Assembly this past year in the budget. Fifty-four point nine million was approved for new trails and greenways by the state legislature for the two-year budget. New non-recurring 25 million trail and greenway funding program called the Great Trail State Program. Five million to the Complete the Trails Fund, supporting authorized North Carolina State Trails. Twenty-five million to specific trail and greenway projects. And the one closest home for us out of that 25 million is two and a half million to Camp Reer G5 Trail Collective for their trail construction. And I believe they're on track to add another 18 to 25 miles in the next year and a half to two years with this funding. So, and this is not looking very good, is it? It looks great on this screen. I'm not sure what the deal is there, but I'll just go on and just verbally talk to you, maybe just thinking. Anyway, when we put together our program for the Great Trails State with the McDowell Trails Association and for the Year of the Trail, we wanted to try to get as many different kinds of programs and things that we could do in the county. The goal was one event in each of the 100 counties statewide. We planned 22, and as of December 7th, for McDowell County, there were 35 separate Year of the Trail events. And some of those were ones that McDowell County, the commissioners were involved with and county government, the Trails and Trains Festival, certainly others, McDowell Moves, these that we have talked about. Oh, there it is. Well, one came up. We celebrated Great Trail State Day on October 21st along with McDowell Moves. And we had a family day on the greenway, which was very popular. We had a lot of support for that. We had our Year of the Trail banners that we put out in several places in the county. We did 12 guided hikes, about one each month. So our goal was to get people involved in trails, to educate people about trails and the importance of trails, and to advocate more for trails and future support for trails. Two other items, things that came through, one was ribbon cutting for the Black Bear Campground and Park, which is a gem on the lake, and I thank you all so much for working with Duke Energy and getting that up and going. That is a beautiful facility. And the other was the Pvine Rail Trail, which there's a ribbon cutting for the first phase that was done, I thought it was October 6th. The new signage that was put in, funding was provided for that through McDowell TDA, McDowell Trails Association, and the city of Marion, particularly the public works who did a lot of the labor on just fixing up the first part of that trail. The next phase is coming, and that's where you have, I believe there's a provided flyer for you. The next phase will be to improve these two trestles that will allow us to extend the trail, the Pvine Trail, to Jacktown Road. And by doing that, we've begun a reserve pass, build a future, save Pvine trestles. There is a picture, and it's too bad that we'll only show maybe for a moment or two, but there's a picture here. The trestle is just an overgrown kudzu-covered mess. It needs work. We've had, the city had an engineering report done on it, but the picture on the right-hand side here shows what our vision is for it. We want it to be a trail on the trestle that people will be able to use to continue down the trail. Once we have those trestles in place, we can move forward on extending the trail. The city of Marion, working very closely with them. And I just wanted you to be aware that that is the next phase. Once we get to Jacktown Road, then the next phase will be to connect with McDowell Tech. The really nice thing about that, you can go from downtown Marion to McDowell Tech without being on the road, afraid of commuting on bicycle from downtown. The long, long range would then be to extend from McDowell Tech down to Rutherford County and connect up with the Thermal Hill Trail. Then you would have Marion to Forest City without getting on the road. So we're taking it one small step at a time, one phase at a time, but we do have a vision for that, and we think that will be a connector trail for other trails in the region. What's next, looking ahead to 2024? There is not going to be a letdown. The Year of the Trail will segue to the Great North Carolina as the Great Trail State. Right now, a group is working on branding that, what that brand is going to look like, but North Carolina will be the Great Trail State. We have, I think it's now 13 or 14 designated state trails, and I think we've seen this map before. But what I also like to show with the State Trails map is that if you focus in on McDowell County, which is in the red circle there, you will see the convergence of four state trails all coming together right here in McDowell County. There's not too many places in the state that have that many trails coming together in one place. So we have the Font de Flora State Trail, Mount Secie State Trail, Wilderness Gateway, which is across the southern part of McDowell County and Rutherford County, and the Overmountain Victory State Trail, which is a little north-south. And then we would add to that, it's not a state trail, but of course, the Pvine will also be another north-south connector. So we have the potential of being able to bring together four state trails, plus the Pvine and other connector trails, to really make McDowell County a hub for trails. And so that's the vision that we have, and we are going to work with local governments, with partners like Friends of Font de Flora State Trail, and other nonprofits to see that we get this vision and what an economic driver that will be within our region. So North Carolina is the Great Trail State, but I would add to that that McDowell County is a Great Trails County, and that's what we want to carry forward into 2024. We're already working on a calendar of events. We will be doing our monthly hikes starting January 1st, and we've already chosen the Black Bear Campground and Park to show it off to the public. We'll be having our first day hike there on the afternoon of January 1st. We will be doing an event in February, very similar to what we did last year with Make a Date for the Trail. That was very popular and well-attended. We're doing our third edition of the Rock and Roll Recycling Event, the Trails and Trains Festival at Old Fort, moving right through to another family day on the Greenway Trail, and Greenway Cleanups and Maintenance Events, partnering with other groups on that. And then McDowell Moves on Great Trail State Day in October. So we want to keep the momentum of Year of the Trail rolling right through into the Great Trail State and McDowell County, a Great Trails County. And so we will also look forward to many partnership events, particularly, fingers crossed, for sometime mid-2024, the Calcal's Trail reopening. That is going to be fantastic. The G5 Collector Trails, the Old Fort Font de Flora State Trailhead Park, hopefully next year with the MTA-funded Dog Park as part of that. We're looking forward to that. And other events as well that we will try to carry through. And the Great Trail State Coalition is going to, for the first time, have a statewide conference of the Great Trail State, so we'll be looking for that. I'll close just with a couple of things. One, you have this buff-colored sheet that is just MTA at a glance, but again, it has our mission and our vision, which I know you're all familiar with. And just, there's also some of the recent projects we've done. From 2018 through 2023, the MTA has invested over $65,000 in major trail projects in McDowell County. So roughly the last five years or so, we've been able to invest $65,000 into various projects throughout the county. And that money largely has come through donations and fundraisers that we've done. So we look forward to be able to continue the momentum with the Year of the Trail into the Great Trail State. And with that, again, well, thank you for this time, sharing this update with you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, let's roll right into 2024 and the Great Trail State and McDowell County, a Great Trails County.
Wonderful. Okay, questions, comments for Steve, our board members?
No, just exciting update. Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. A lot of good things going on.
Glad to, yes, sir.
You have a group going down in September to the...
Definitely, we will, yes, we will be going, but maybe, hopefully, we can have a booth there and share what we're doing with the state.
Thank you.
Steve, I love the excitement you have when you make these presentations. You do a great job in the extension on these trails. That's going to be a super great thing to have, and I'm excited about that. Thank you, guys, all that are involved.
Absolutely. And this is not a, this is, the MTA has a board of 18 members, very active board, and then also, we really value our partnerships, particularly our friends at the Friends of Font de Flora State Trail. We are a part of that board, and they're doing great things. We're going to hear from Amanda probably right now, unless there's any other questions.
Steve, thanks so much. When, just so I care, when did MTA, when was it founded?
2005. That's when it was founded. Frank Dean, Bill Henley, the driving forces behind that. And so, yeah, we're standing on some raw shoulders, but, yeah.
Well, the investment, you said this in the meeting, I never forgot it. Forgotten it. You said, "For every dollar invested, it yields a return of $1.79."
Seventy-two.
$1.72, again, shoot, $1.72. So that's wonderful.
That is, yes. That's off quoted from the state, from a study the state did. And one of the slides that I didn't get to show, but the outdoor recreation industry in the state of North Carolina has grown exponentially over the last several years. And so we've seen that just here in McDowell County, in Old Fort, and outdoor recreation is an economic engine, and we really want to continue to see that happen.
It's wonderful, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Steve. At this time, let's move to item C on our appointment schedule, and we have Amanda with us tonight. So Amanda, come on up. Topic is Font de Flora State Trail Grant. So welcome to the boardroom. So glad to have you.
Thank you for having me, everyone. I always enjoy speaking to you. Let's make sure we have a good one, isn't it? Okay. Steve, where did you hide the...
It should be under the acrobat.
Oh, okay. It's on. Adobe. Okay, great. So there's our map. I'll show you that in just a moment. Let me just make sure that I... Yep, there we go. Okay. All right. Thank you all for having me. I always enjoy presenting to you all. It's nice to be able to come to you with good news, and I think this is no exception. Steve iterated a lot of the events and the budget that we have brought to McDowell County this year. Friends of Font de Flora hosted 26 events this year, a lot of them trail maintenance, over half of them in McDowell County. So I'm proud that we were able to get our citizens out on the trail during the Year of the Trail. I've come to share some other good news with you, some advancements on the Old Fort Arrowhead Park project and the extension thereof, so I'll get right to it. So, Old Fort Font de Flora Trailhead, we've got some familiar faces on this slide here. We hosted the groundbreaking inside because of inclement weather, so we didn't break the concrete at the depot in Old Fort, but the gesture was all the same, with a lot of excitement about this trailhead and Arrowhead Park. If you'll remember, it was funded by Part of Grant, a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. You helped us raise a $330,000 match for, and that's Brian Strong with the state there, leaning against Tony, so we know he's well-connected. So that is Phase 1 of this project, which resulted in $660,000 for McDowell County's economic and trail empowerment. This is the illustrative master plan for that park. As you can see, a lot of amenities for our citizens. This was done by Destination by Design that got public input to plan these different segments of the park. We will be able to install very soon. The flagging is on the ground. I went and checked today, just before I came to you, so I could share that good news. So that means that groundbreaking will actually happen very soon. We'll get to Phase 1 of this, which will be the restrooms, 100 parking spots, and then the trail inside of this park, in addition to the McDowell Trail Association's Dog Park, which will go in. And we'll also have a picnic shelter that people will be able to utilize for all of their celebrations and just their, usually, utilized for eating their lunches. As you can see at the bottom of this map, the Font de Flora State Trail will go through the park. So we will have a paved segment of Font de Flora through the park. And the extension that I'm going to talk to you about is both before and after this trailhead. So there'll be a small segment that I'll talk to you about, that we acquired land for from a willing landowner that was going to allow us to get from Lackey Town Road to the actual trailhead itself. That will put, will regrade and improve the existing road that will get us into the trailhead, in addition to putting Font de Flora, about 1,100 linear feet of Font de Flora along that road. And then the other half of it is on the map that you see here. This will get us close to Curtis Creek, so it'll take us on state property and town of Old Fort property across the railroad tracks, Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks, to Curtis Creek. All of that either on state or town of Old Fort property. That'll get us about another 2,600 linear feet of trail, actually about 3,600, because we'll have to go with the topography. That's a crow flies 2,600. And that will get us to Curtis Creek, and that is where our funding ends currently. That was due to an RTP grant, Recreational Trust Fund grant, that Friends of Font de Flora State Trail applied for. That was $125,000. And then the next segment here will be from Curtis Creek, getting over Curtis Creek, all the way out to Greenlee Road. Again, we'll be utilizing town of Old Fort property. This really crucial segment will also give us connectivity to the US Forest Service Trails, the Gateway Trails with G5 across 70, so people will know they'll have to use Highway 70 for biking or pedestrian access. We know that's a really dangerous road. We don't want people walking on it or biking on it. Just last year, a motorcyclist was killed at that intersection. Some removal of a bank has helped to improve the visibility there, but we still want to offer people a different route to downtown Old Fort and the economic viability there. So what I'm asking you to approve is the application of the Water Resources Development Grant. I know you've heard that a lot before. The county is uniquely eligible to apply for that grant. As a gesture of our goodwill and love of McDowell County Government, the Friends of Font de Flora State Trail with our partner have gone ahead and written the application for you, so you wouldn't have to expend county resources to do that. It's a tricky wicket, that application, but we got it down, we have it in your hands, and we are also offering to provide the match of $68,750 that will be needed to get us a bridge across Curtis Creek and to Greenlee Road. So that is what I'm asking you all for today. That's what we're calling Phase 2, the Extension Project. It'll be a 100 linear foot bridge that will cross Curtis Creek and will connect the two planned segments of Font de Flora State Trail. So we're asking that, letting us be the 50% match for the grant and you utilizing your county resources to actually submit the application, and you'll be the designees for the grant itself, which I will be happy to work with you to do, but we do need some county hours, staff hours, to be able to administer the grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant resolution.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I introduce last time.
Wonderful, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for your support. As always, I want to make sure that everybody's informed, so here's the budget that we have put together. We used consultants to put this budget together, so it's quite accurate, and we look forward to helping you with this grant. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you for all you do.
Yes.
Happy to do it. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight.
And you've got a guest with you here, too.
I do, yeah.
Judge, you ain't even gonna say no, sir.
He will not be silenced. So Judge Bonhoeffer would like to talk to you as well.
I will say that the judge has been very, very actively involved in the pursuit of funding via the state to make a lot of these trails possible, so that way we wouldn't be utilizing local dollars. And so from our board, we say thank you for your hard work in bringing state funding to these projects, so we can use local funding for other things, too. So thank you, Judge. Let me add as well, he has also done a lot for this county as far as road bridges, highways, and support for us in that sense, so thank you.
I'll try to be brief, but there's so much going on. When I think back, when we started Friends of Font de Flora State Trail, never dreamed we'd be where we are today. With all that's gone on, and a part of the project up there, that Charles Baker has got the contract, some of y'all know Charles, and you've heard, he's starting now, finally got that last permit, the dead add. And now with the projects to connect that to Lackey Town and then over to Greenlee, that's going to be huge. You're going through town, connecting that. We've still got a little bit of work to do, get over to Point Lookout. But once we do that, and get up to the top of the mountain, and things are starting to happen with Black Mountain and trying to connect up to that depot, and we really would have to get up to Black Mountain, Old Fort. All these things going on, and, but you heard Steve talk about the Great Trails, Great Trail State Coalition. Friends of Font de Flora was major, major at the start of that. I mean, major. We had Andrew Cota was on our board, Steve was on our board, myself, Beth Hiley. And Steve, I've kind of backed off, but Steve is still active. Amanda, Beth is major. She was the one that was head of the, you remember, she followed me as president, you know, met Beth as president of Friends of Font de Flora. So we actually, that thing started in a little meeting in Raleigh, and I can't believe where it's all come to now. And with that first 29 million we got two years ago, and with this, now you heard Steve talking about the 50-some billion, and of that, it's for all trails, not just for state trail, but we did give $200,000 additional designation. We've got 500 before, plus we're getting some money for the land still, and I did talk to him, I actually about getting a reimbursement, and that should be coming soon, and we got one for Old Fort that's been sitting on the desk, and I was in Raleigh and had a chance to talk to him this week. But things are really, really moving. The county park you've got down there, we've got to get from the county park across over to Burke County line. One thing, I did meet with the head of state parks, as well as DOT, they're now working together. Two things that could be big and helping us, one is that the head of state parks said, we've been trying to get this, that, you know, crossing bridges, we've got a lot of bridges we've got to cross, and how do you get across those bridges? Well, DOT is just not going to go out there and redo every bridge that we've got to cross. As they come across and redo bridges... As they come across and redo bridges, we're going to hope that State Parks and DOT is now meeting, they'll work these things out, but the director of State Parks did tell me that I should, that we could come up to a bridge with the trail, Fontana Flora State Trail, and it was all over the state, they've got this Mountains and Sea Trail a lot. Come up to the bridge, stop the trail, on the other side of the bridge, start the trail. Until you can do something about the bridge. People are going to walk across it, bike across it anyway, so just let them go ahead and do it. It just won't be part of the trail for that bridge. But we, otherwise, we'd have to stop. And if you have to stop till you get a bridge, we've been working on Canal Bridge, and that's about to come through now, finally. And that's key to coming out of the park and then going back towards Burke County. And by the way, we're working on easement with a local landowner that's on the other side of the, towards the park, and I won't say his name, but he's been wonderful to help there. And we get that connected, that connects us all the way back through the park, over the, over the Mountain Victory Trail, that through there. That's going to open up, and that can be done, that can be done pretty quickly. And that's pretty much funded with the state, through the state park. So, and then we come up and we've got the project that the county is working on, that's key. That's the SIPs, on project DOT, we've been working on it for probably 15 years, I guess, actually it seems like. And the big issue is how do you get across 70? That's the big issue. And we've been fighting that battle for a long time. They've got, they've got a new suggestion now that I think, and I hope y'all will look at, and, and we've got to find a way to do it. It takes out crossing 70 and, uh, road economy road. Otherwise, you're going to have to cross two roads, and it's, it's very dangerous. Do you wait, that the engineers came up with? We had talked about coming behind the Henley House, but that has issues, too. He did agree to, close to that, by the way. But, we've come up with now, we've crossed the bridge, we've crossed with a bridge at the county, at the city end there of the greenway, cross over there on the other side, go underneath the bridge on that side, then come back over to Ford Miller property that y'all purchased, uh, with the bridge, and then go down in the existing project, which has the bridge, over there and connect up to Resistoplex Road. It would be beautiful, it'd be wonderful, it'd be a spectacular trail. So we're going to have to figure out, I hope that's what they'll recommend, and y'all will adopt. I will pay for it because it's, it's in the DOT project, but as you know, it's a 20% match is the county part of it, and those projects keep going up. I understand that, working together, I think we can find ways and getting some, Resistoplex to Old Fort, that's something that's being looked at. The last thing I would mention to you is, y'all have been wonderful in funding us. You, you really have. You stepped up every time with that money that you provided, and we've come to you with something we needed, you've done it. We're going to have to find a way. Friends of Fontana Flora is doing all this with Amanda, and we did get a grant to have somebody part-time and just helps with paperwork and stuff, but Old Fort projects up there, there's so much going on. What's going to be in the county, we're going to have to find a way to get her some help. She can't do all that, do all the grants. You wouldn't believe the grants she's applied for, and, and we've gotten. And Ashley gets credit for coming up with that $100,000 or whatever it was grant up there for Old Fort. He thought of that one day, and we were having a meeting, and said, and maybe we could do that. And Amanda, and somebody here, put it together in like, less than a week, and we got that. And those, those type of things are going on, and she's really good at doing those things, but she's got three counties. This county's getting most of our attention. Burke County's got people on their staff, and they've got a lot of the trail already done. Bonham hadn't done much yet, they're kind of sitting on their hands up there, but they're getting ready to. But right now's where most of the stuff's going on, so we've got to figure out ways to try to help. Like I said, it's amazing. You're going to see in the next three years. And there's another thing, it's up, up in here, if it comes about, and we'll know within about six months, then we'll really be able to do something. The other thing that I didn't mention about DOT is, in talking to the secretary, he's agreed now to look at side paths, which we would be able to do on their, their road easements, natural trail. Right now, if we're on that road easement, it's got to go to the SIPs project, probably take 10 years, you've got to have a paved trail, it's got to be 10 feet wide, and we don't need that. And see, a lot of our trail in this county is next to DOT. So, we think now that that hurdle is going to be able to be done, because we can build trails, the natural trails, we can put them down, and they don't cost much. And we can do them immediately, soon as we got the, got the easement. So, all this is going to be happening, and the feasibility study, we've got the trails now, we know where they're going to go. One of the things that's now part of, it's a feeder trail, and it should have a higher priority. Topple Falls, downtown Old Fort. And that would be a side path, that's another thing. That could happen much, much quicker if we get that done. All these things going on, so, yeah. Like I said, I've been amazed at what's happened, because before that, there was no state money in trails. The only money, it was like out there, that project at connecting the two trails and going to Resistoplex, that's federal money. There's no state money in it, it's federal and yours. I think I've covered everything. So, anybody got any questions, I'll answer them, call me, and we'll see what we can, take y'all in.
One thing I'd like to add to what you've said. Amanda works very hard, and I think she has part-time staff currently helping her that is provided, her salary's provided by grant money. And I'd like for the county to look at the possibility of maybe matching that grant money in order to get full-time help to, to help in administrate part of that, because I know she's overwhelmed with, with work in her job, but I just.
Contacting the landowners in that feasibility study, there's, there's over $100. And they have to all be contacted and worked out easements and get across their property or find another, other way. And that's going to take a lot of, some person's time to do that. And with everything else, and if we free her up, she can get the grants and keep these things going and coordination, and people in Raleigh, we're the, they reckon now, we're the party along the Indian State Trails, other than Mountains and Sea, and they've been existence for a long time. But we've got a lot of projects, more than anybody else. Thank you. Anybody else?
Appreciate what you do.
Yes.
Thank you, Judge. Okay. And just, just to highlight, a lot gets done because people work together, they partner together, and the vision of MTA and Fontana Flora, and Judge, you mentioned it, the trails that are all, we have right here located just in one county is amazing what's going on, the work that's being done, so. And it's all done to benefit the people, and that's what's the goal, to benefit our people. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's a good item, A, and real businesses, will be building projects, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, and read this out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got quite a bit of capital projects on your to-do list, but I, I think the most important project that you've identified that needs to, needs to happen is a new DSS facility, and you've talked about this maybe two or three years now, but with more urgency over the past nine months or a year. We had some discussions early on in this calendar year with our legislators about seeking state assistance for this facility. There were a lot of requests made of our legislators in our districts as well as statewide, and only so much money was passed around, I guess, for various local projects. But you've made it clear that you want to continue that advocacy for assistance, especially based on you doing work on behalf of the state for the programs that you're administering. So, some of the feedback we've received from legislative delegation, we've provided cost estimates in the past. We've received additional feedback that maybe not full-out, you know, mock-ups of buildings and things, but some digital renderings, site plans, other things that can show where buildings might be located would probably help in advocacy. And so, with your permission and authority, we have an architect that has been selected for this project but not contracted. I'd like to talk to them about having relatively low cost, if low cost would be nice, no or low mock-up, site plans, those sorts of things that could be put together in addition to the cost estimates that we can then carry forward for our delegation for the short session.
Will that be posted, or was, or how was that, you just got one, one architect?
No, we did a RFQ process probably nine or 10 months ago. The firm that was most qualified at that time was a firm called Little out of Charlotte.
I'll make a motion to accept the Little for the planning proposal.
Second.
Discussion. I'll favor say aye. I ain't opposed last time.
Okay. The next item is Recreation Center update, just really one sentence here. You've authorized the rebid of that due to the Christmas holidays and vacations and reengineering that was necessary. It looks like the first week of January is going to be our advertisement date, so work with Mr. McMurray on that to get it out, the papers as soon as possible. The next item is Animal Shelter. Again, talking about the state, the state is requiring movement on the DSS, also essentially on the animal shelter based on animal welfare requirements there. The site that we've identified as a future potential location on 226 South has been evaluated for wetlands, and there's also a site survey going to happen after that, and the state is being consulted on what would need to be in that facility based on some preliminary drawings. So, we've talked about fundraising for that, we've had some major donors set forth, and some others maybe waiting in the wings to see how some of this plays out. So, once we get some of the preliminary engineering done, that would be the goal, to have a bigger splash, maybe after the first of the year. The last item under capital planning, Garden Street Parking Lot, which was the EMS building. If you've driven by, there is a grassy lot there now, that's just seeding from, for erosion control. We've had some discussions with local contractors, just some, some quotes. We're trying to do some verbal quotes right now from a couple, just to kind of get an idea of what a design build on a parking lot would look like. Once we get a rough idea, we'll come back to you to get authority to move forward if it seems like something we can, we can afford in the next year or two, and then we'll do a formal bid at that point if you agree.
Okay, comments, questions? They're being asked of item B, this will be the Universal Property Agreement. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. As you know, the county purchased a little over 300 acres at the Universal Complex in The city has owned property adjacent to that site for probably close to 70 or 80 years. There's a small area that essentially abuts to what is now being turned into the Universal Technology Park, the business park, that, to use a technical term, it juts into county property. You see the map in your enclosure. The best as I can tell, maybe in the 50s and 60s, this, what was the town at that point, the city purchased that acreage from a prior landowner for buffering from what was then the city's sewage treatment plant. And so, this property, it's bisected by a new road that was put in, part of it is needed for future development. And it really complicates things when we are trying for permits, when we're marketing property and other things, to have two owners. And so, the, we've got a, a model through the Drexel property that we owned with the city, that you deeded to the city to allow for them to apply for grants, in much of the same way as this is talked about. So we have, in a local agreement, that would keep their interest in the property, if not legally, through like a property interest, their interest would be served by adoption as agreement. So we would own it, but if we're going to sell it, modify it, those sorts of things, we would consult with them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the local, enter local agreement.
Second.
Discussion. I'll favor say aye. I ain't opposed last time.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move to broadband update. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. We have talked for many months off and on about expanding broadband. You heard from Spectrum several months ago about the 4,000, 5,000 addresses they're going to serve through various programs over the next two years. Another program we would like to apply for, and it's getting real now, where before it's been hypothetical, is the Completing Access to Broadband Grant, also known as CAB. This is a combination of funding between the state, the county, and the provider. You've identified originally a million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funding for broadband. You've obligated 100,000 for prior grants, so there's 900,000 that could be spent on this program. And so, we're starting to roll out the program application. I would like for your blessing and permission to apply based on the $900,000 contribution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve and apply for the CAB funding.
Make a motion, second.
Second. And I'd all, I'd also like to note, a million dollars that we set aside for ARPA has brought back almost $10 million in broadband expansion, so I think we've leveraged that million dollars of ARPA funds in a good way.
Okay, that's great. All right, I have a motion for, I'll favor say aye. I ain't opposed last time. Okay. Let's go to item D, under all businesses, this is Water System Projects. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I laid out the memo a little bit differently this time, maybe from here on out, this is how we're going to operate with perhaps two water systems. So I've got NIBO, work has begun on Phase One, won't go over the roads there, but the line on Lonesome Pine Drive is, is complete, and a line on 126 is under construction now. Happy Time Hollow has been permitted and is ready for bid, and I was explaining to several earlier today that this project is different than others, in case people get confused. The Happy Time Hollow grant will allow for the actual connection of houses where the other ones do not. So that's the specific funding, so we will be doing letters to those homeowners, I guess, providing them the opportunity. They don't have to, but if they want water service, the plumbing will be paid for by the grant. Phase Two, which is coming back closer to Marion, old number 10 Memorial Park Road, we're pretty much at the final design, and permitting is underway, so that's under review in Raleigh. The East End Project, which is along 126 towards the state park, that's been awarded. We're having a meeting with the property owners this week to go over project details. So it would be a very complex project to implement. And then, lastly, under NIBO, the Appalachian Regional Commission grants we have received, we've met with an engineer that was deemed to be the most qualified, that'll be doing the Exit 90 project around the end of that intersection, and we'll have a contract for you hopefully next month on that. So, shifting to our new future water system, the, what's historically the Providence area, the West Marion Elementary area. Again, I've noted that we've received an Appalachian Regional Commission grant for 500,000. The state has awarded 3.88 million for water for that community, and you had asked the Board of Education to partner the project as well, since it would serve the school, and they did vote to allocate 500,000 in capital monies over the next several budget years. And so, I don't have that letter yet, but I have that verbal communication, and so I'll share that with you when I get it.
And we do, this will definitely say thank you to the school board, because that board voted unanimously, go ahead and allocate 500,000 towards that project, so that, we appreciate the partnership there, too.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we have staff send a letter to the state to receive the formal letter to proceed.
Okay, have a motion before we have a second. Discussion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
I ain't opposed. Let's go to our next item under new businesses, this will be. Let's go to our next item under new business, this will be a resolution of support for Israel.
I'll kick it off, and I know, and so, last month, there was a request to have this resolution on the agenda, and, Mr. Chairman, I know you had some contact with staff about maybe adding some language to the sample resolution that was given you. Do you have that?
I do.
So, the clerk has the resolution that was, changes were proposed by the chairman, and so, those were inserted at his request, and so, however you would like to proceed with the approval.
I just brought the one copy. Oh, just the one copy. Okay, well, I'll just start with the three items I added, a request to be added, starting out with, whereas Israel was founded as a nation on May 14, 1948. Second one added was, whereas the Holy Scripture stayed in Genesis Chapter 12, verse 3, and it says, "Now bless thee and curse him that cursed thee, and in thee shall all the families of the earth be blessed." And then, third addition, if the board approves it, would be, whereas the Board of Commissioners desires the blessings of the Almighty God on the citizens of McDowell County. So, that's the three additions that I have requested, but now the board totally can decide what you want to do with those, whether to add them or not.
Mr. Chairman, I'm 100% support of the, of this, and I will go ahead and approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor say aye, and you pose last sign. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Let's go to item B, under new business administrative items, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'll mention what you added earlier, the warranty, non-warranty deed that you have at your table. Back in 2008, the county agreed to receive property on Baldwin Avenue, which was the old office for Marion Manufacturing. The county and the college, I guess that property was donated to the college for training purposes, the Ford Miller family, Mr. Miller himself, I believe, that was donated to the college. The college cannot finance property without the county's participation, and so the county had to own it for the purposes of the debt, and so that debt will be paid off in about six days, and we'd like to give it back to the college. So, this would, by your action and execution of this deed, we'll give it back. Christmas present.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and you pose last sign.
Thank you. And the only three other administrative items, you have a water system write-off, EMS write-offs, and there are financing proposals for eight sheriff's office vehicles there. The First Citizens Bank was the lowest bid at 4.69% for over, for four years, eight semi-annual payments, and there's a resolution authorizing.
And we do have a sheriff that's not, so sheriff, come on up, sir, and we'll recognize your name, and any comments you want to add, be glad to hear.
No, just glad to be here.
Good deal.
Can I make a motion to accept administrative items as presented?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and you pose last sign. Okay, let's move to item C, Budget Update, go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Again, twofold reason for having this broken out like you do, you get to see the sales tax, the budget report, as well as property tax collection report, but also to do some budget updates that we need to have done. You have a project budget ordinance amendment for Universal Industrial Park, Water and Sewer Amendment Two, you have a project closeout resolution for triple ought design, and there's a project ordinance for the Animal Shelter project, which the only cost expenditure there right now is just surveying. Then you have some budget amendments, GF 7 through 11, and then DS 1, which is related to debt service.
Motion to approve is presented. Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and you pose last sign. Okay, let's go to item D, Tax Matters, go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. You have what I would call the typical tax matters for the month, releases, rebills, and refunds. We also did receive, and I believe you were emailing these as well, they're at your table, if not in your packet, some of the same that were, came after the packet was sent out to you, some releases and some refunds.
Okay, what special board?
Motion to approve tax matters as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and you pose last sign. Let's go to item E, under new business, this is our 2024 meeting schedule, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. We've not always done this, but you've kept your second and third Monday meeting schedule pretty much standard and adjusted in the year where you need to, and what we're asking for here would allow you to change meeting dates and add meetings as you would need to, but thought it might help for you as well as the public to go ahead and get the schedule out there. There are a couple of changes I'll note, the third Monday in January is the Martin Luther King Holiday, and so we would propose to meet the next Monday. The June 28 meeting, we typically meet the last day of the fiscal year, that's the last business day. October 14, there's a 4:00 PM meeting for the Carson House, and the location will be at the Carson House. And then in November, again, we're almost a year away, you can always change it. Due to the Veterans Day being on the 11th, which is a Monday, the suggestion was to have one meeting that month, the next week on the 18th at 5:00. Then December 2 is the first Monday of the month, you're required to meet on the first Monday of December in an election year. So, I would request that you go ahead and approve this tonight, especially for the January meeting, but you can always make changes in the year if you want to.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and you pose last sign. Okay, let's go to our next item now, this will be system comment. The county attorney's got the list, so, Mr. Attorney, if you will bring that to the clerk, which you're en route to doing right now. Okay, if anyone else has signed up to speak, Madam Clerk.
That is it.
Okay, with that being said, Mr. Wood, do we need a motion to go into closed session now at this point?
Do you want to do the greetings first?
Okay.
Then?
And the Christmas story. So, we always, one thing our board does every year, two things really, we always do our Christmas greeting by the commissioners to the public, and then we also read out of the Bible, the Christmas story, and we make no apology for doing either one of those. So, at this time, we have Commissioner Allison who will read us the Christmas story.
Okay. We'll be reading out Luke chapter 2, "And it came to pass in those days that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Cyrenius was governor of Syria, and all went to be taxed, everyone into his own city. And Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth into Judea unto the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was of the house and lineage of David. To be taxed with Mary, his espoused wife, with being great with child. And so it was that while they were there, the days were accomplished that she should be delivered. And she brought forth her firstborn son, and wrapped him in swaddling clothes, and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the inn. And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angels said unto them, fear not, for behold I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you, ye shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, let us now go even unto Bethlehem, and see this thing which has come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste, and found Mary and Joseph and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they had, and all they that heard it wondered at those things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things, and pondered them in her heart." All right. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We just pray that your family has a great Christmas and a great New Year, and we just ask for safety for all of our people throughout the holiday season, and from my family to yours, Merry Christmas.
I'd just like to say that as well, that I have, well, I'll go ahead and say this, I appreciate the opportunity of serving as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners over the past few years, and we gladly passed it off to Mr. Walker, and I'm sure that he'll do a great job. I appreciate you guys that come in here and, you know, have your comments, you know, they bear listening to, and I would want to say this, that, you know, we do sometimes make mistakes in things that we do, and we don't deny that, but we appreciate your comments, and that makes us take a second look at things, and we certainly appreciate that. I would like to say to every one of y'all that are sitting here tonight, and all of those that are watching tonight, I would like to say that I wish them a healthy Merry Christmas, and I wish that God would bless each and every one in a very special way, and I hope that we all keep the true meaning of Christmas at heart. Merry Christmas.
I want to say that it's an honor to be here tonight, and most of all, though, I want to say that I'm glad I know what Christmas is all about, the true meaning of Christmas. It's good to give gifts, but I want to say that I appreciate the greatest gift ever given, and that was God's Son being born in a manger, so that one day he could live and then die for my sins, and I thank God for that. I do want to say Merry Christmas to everybody present, everybody watching, and we want to say that McDowell County is the best county to live in, work in, raise your family, and we just wish health, happiness, peace, and joy, and goodwill to all the people in this county. Merry Christmas to everyone in McDowell County.
Well, it is definitely an honor to serve as Commissioner here in the county. I do think that the, sometimes it can be challenging because of personality conflicts and different things, but I want to second what Mr. Brown stated, I appreciate the information that was brought forth in public comment. I appreciate that. I do thank, I thank Christ for being my advocate, for I realize that I failed, and I, but I do try to, one, speak my mind, I do try to learn as much as I can, read, do what I can. I do appreciate Christ being my advocate, and I, and that is what Christmas, Christmas is about, because one day he will come back as King, and it will be, it will be a different type coming. But with Christmas, it is wonderful for our families. I do want to say Merry Christmas to the staff of McDowell County, I do want to say Merry Christmas to the taxpayers. I do want to just say thank you very much for the law enforcement, EMS, for the top level job that's done. There are legislation out there that may have our hands tied, there may be issues at hospitals where we have to kind of take a pause and kind of get new game plans together. But it is a, I think we are blessed here in the county. The landscape that we've got alone is magnificently beautiful compared to many places, but to everybody here, to everybody watching, to people that are not watching, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and hopefully next year will be a better year than this year.
Yeah, thank you. Wes, our county manager of state, give a brief services, Wood.
Following Commissioner Ellis's comments about staff, I think every year that it's worth noting that we have staff that work day in and day out and serve the people that are in this room, and I know the folks that are here appreciate them, especially those that are in law enforcement and our emergency services. Oftentimes, while some of us maybe are at home watching football game or something, they're facing some of those difficult issues, some that were talked about tonight, so it's definitely appreciated from this resident and taxpayer that lives in this county for what they do, maybe in the dark of night. Really appreciate this board, you care about this county. Sometimes there's differences of opinion even on this board, and as well as differences of opinion between yourselves and people you represent or other agencies in the county, but it's clear that you do care about the county, and I really, I wouldn't work anywhere where the people didn't, and so I'm glad you do. And I just want to say finally, thank you Chairman Brown for your service the last couple of years as chairman. We don't play favorites as managers, but usually when we do phone calls and things, we start with the chairman and then quickly work our way through, and so, been my first call there for a while, so you'll be at the top of the list as vice chair, so don't worry, but again, appreciate your service, and behalf of staff, appreciate that, and thank you all, and Merry Christmas to everyone, appreciate your attendance and interest.
And last but not least, our clerk to the board.
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. I really do appreciate the opportunity, and I really see how hard you guys work, law enforcement, first responders, and I really care about the people in this county, and I have been blessed, my family's been blessed by the people of this county, so Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and may everybody have a blessed Christmas.
Thanks so much, okay. At this time, do we need a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Okay. After a brief recess, or, after a brief closed session for personnel matters, there's no action taken, do we have a motion adjourned or recess to the First Baptist Church Fellowship Hall?
So, move second.
All in favor say aye.